Okay, I will open up this hearing, this meeting of the main planning board. Date is April twenty sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and the time is seven oh nine P M. Tonight's meeting is a, is a hybrid format meeting, that means people can either join virtually, or it can be here in present at town hall. And then at the meeting at town hall, we have Bill Crenshaw, Natalie Robert, myself, and Jim Coleman, and Annette Garabedian will be our fifth member tonight. She is virtual at the moment, but will be joining us at town hall shortly. I'll open up item number one, the minutes from March twenty-second.
We got a couple of comments on the minute. On page three in the D O D discussion. Third real paragraph.
Which one, Bill? Page three?
Yeah, page three, the discussion, the paragraph where Jim was talking about Walgreens. It says the Walgreens property may have been vacant, I think the reference is the upper level of the Walgreens property vacant since.
Oh, I see, okay, go.
And then, page four, third paragraph, second sentence. It has a reference to the parking for written residential business has been amended to cover structure size, exactly bedroom side.
Yeah, I don't see, but I'll mark that. Better number, added as size.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments on meeting minutes? I'll move to accept the minutes as amended by Mr. Crenshaw. All in favor of my hand? It's four zero, Bill, thank you, to approve the minutes from April twenty-second. Mister Chair, Olaf, I don't know how you want to run, but I, he sent a presentation which I voted to, but it's on here if you wanna, I don't know how you want to present her, but I've got it here if you want to fire it up, you can do that, we, we can do that, let me open up the hearing first. I'll open up the public hearing for Seventeen Mason Street. I'll give a, I have a few introductory words, and then Bill, maybe it'd be helpful to provide context, and then we'll turn over to the applicant, Olaf, thank you, joining us tonight, so we'll get with you in a minute. So that we're all, so that the members are all on the same page. We have four items that are listed in the staff report that we're working towards, so would you mind bringing up the staff report first? Since, just because of the nature of the four items, I just want these on the front of our minds as we look through this. If you scroll down to the, the last page. Right there, yeah, so the action items, basically, first action item ties back to section ten point four, which is the zoning bylaws. For a special permit, did I get that correct, though? The second item is nine point four point six, which is the special permit from the D O D. The third item is that board shall consider whether or not there's adverse effects proposed regarding the neighborhood, the characteristics of the property. And then, the final item is that the board shall issue a special permit for the establishment. So just to keep in mind that we're looking at section ten point four and nine point four point six. Bill, can you just give us some background on this again, because this is, this is the, the applicant currently occupies location, but can you just go back on the dates when this was first approved?
Initially, the application was approved in two thousand and eighteen. I think a lot of this was, was probably on at that point. The, the attachment, I get, I printed you all a, a copy of the staff report, which has the original decision for four to six Nathan, which is where Olaf was originally cited. We had a number of concerns and mitigation requirements for four to six Nathan Street that were, were, I think, all carried out. There has been been a business, I think C O was in twenty nineteen, right? You got, you started business actually in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty?
We actually opened up April of last year.
Okay, twenty twenty-one, okay. And then we had a, a follow-up, where there was a maintenance, a modification, and the purpose of the modification was to look at the traffic, the police requirements, and a couple of the unknowns, so when we had the, the meeting and discussion, the board decided it was a minor modification, and they altered the hours to, I think it was, was it ten to ten?
Yes.
Yeah, ten to ten. We removed the appointment only requirement. And, oh, I'm forgetting what we did. Oh, the police details, yeah, it's at will, the police, everything, if, if something, we had a catastrophe, and all of a sudden there's, you know, a tsunami of, of activity there. The current decision does allow this board, or actually, the police chief has discretion to go ahead and dispatch officers. It's speaking with the police both on the modification and on the this particular application. They have been very happy with the cooperation, there's been no problems whatsoever. D P W has not reported any parking issues, traffic, all of we, we were very careful with that, and I think that, you know, it was good that we were cautious, but luckily, so far, nothing, it's, we've had no adverse effects that I'm aware of.
This is a, these are new permits that we're looking to improve or discuss, right?
Yeah, this is a brand-new special permit.
We're not modifying previous permits?
Because of the location.
Right.
And, and so the location, you all know, it's right, it's across the street, and I'm sure Olaf can tell you more about how, I wasn't aware that it was gonna move on, but it's, it's a good location, it probably matters than the current one. And that's where we are. So the question, in the staff report, the one thing I wanted to point out was that I'll let Olaf talk about some of the police streets objectives that you're trying to go on, but I did want to remind us, Board, that within the last year or two, as part of the D O D mitigation, we did, Olaf did, provide streets and signage and other improvements that D P W asked for, so I thought in all fairness, since it was a recent permit, and I wanted to bring that up.
Thank you for your attention. I appreciate it.
And that's pretty much it.
And I know we had traffic studies that were involved with that decision, are there any, anything pending, or are the traffic studies all completed for this?
We, it, no, we'll
Well, as far as I know, we presented the, the traffic study and the improvement at the last meeting I was here, I can't remember when that was, but yeah. As far as I know, that was completed.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there's nothing pending from that other permit that we would want to carry over.
No, we had
It sounds like the answer is no.
Yeah, we had a follow-up meeting where he, where he presented the information that has been
Okay, so there's, there's nothing, there's nothing pending from the previous permits that we should discuss?
That's correct.
And it may be helpful to understand, to see just the list of what the conditions were that we had for the previous permits, we can do that later on?
Yeah, you have them in front of you, you have them here, I put them on there on the, as the exhibit.
Which that way we don't need to go back and
Right.
we discuss it.
And in my recommendations, you know, I alluded to these conditions that we had, because I think it was pretty good. But you'll, you'll, you'll see it in there, but it is, it's a passionate one to your staff report, and you'll see all the conditions are there, that were there. And I also added a modification to where we, we modified any hours.
Okay. I think that provides good context. Olaf, thanks for joining us. I know you have a presentation that you prepared, would now be a time to share?
Sure, if that's what you prefer, so, Bill, can you help out with that? Do you want to drive, Bill, or?
I, I think it, but we'll see, I don't know if you want me to drive, but I'll try.
I think I'll be good.
Oh, and I think, I think I would want to. I could, we'll give, we'll give you a minute to figure it out.
There you go, come on now. Is that being shared?
Uh, no.
Do you want to share it?
Yes, of course I do.
Yeah.
But I
I was giving it to you.
Good. Olaf, why don't you give a nice
Chairman, members of the board, Bill, Julia, Wayne, thanks for having me. And so, I figured that we could start with a presentation. Most of the presentation is pretty much the same as we presented three years ago. So just some history, we applied for special permits in two thousand and nineteen, male, the board members are the same, a few years ago, I believe, that we issued the special permit in May of two thousand and nineteen. And so our objective now is to move our special permit from operating in Spencer Four Six Nathan Street to Seventeen Mason Street. And, so Bill, can you?
Next slide.
Yes. Okay, well, you can actually go down to the next one as well. Yeah, so as you can see here, in green is the, our existing location, Four Six Nathan, and we're planning on moving to the yellow, which is the old Savings Savings Bank building, that is the Seventeen Mason, so, all right, so the next one. Yeah, so these are the justification statements, the sections, and I believe that we didn't have number seven at the last time, I think that's a new one. So most of these are pretty much the same as it was three years ago, so we can go down to the next one. So again, we will provide a safe product for the public. Everything is prepackaged, nothing loose. Everything is packaged in a solid food container. We we are required to check the I D upon entry, that will be the same, Seventeen Nathan, two S, Four Six. We also have a priority for main residence to gain employment, currently have four main residences in our Four Six Nathan Street project, where it stores. And also, Mainers will achieve tax revenue and host agreement revenue as well. That's pretty much number one, so that's the next one. The traffic, traffic flow, we talked to Bill and Wayne, we had a few meetings, and talked about the parking situation, and we decided that we would rely on the same setup as we have right now. Even though we do have space behind the building, people can still park there, but I'm not sure if Wayne and Bill, you want to jump in here, or you want to save it for later?
I think my, wherever the chair looks like, Wayne is here, if you want to hear from Wayne.
I'd prefer to hear the presentation, and then we will dive into the details.
Okay, that's okay. Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
So with regards to traffic, we talked about the installing or donating funds, so we can have the cell bike racks in front of the building or in back of the building, where the location where D P W prefers to install them. Our next. Utilities, some public services, exactly the same as last time, no changes in terms of utility providers or changing anything in terms of that would affect our neighbors. Next. Like I said, the neighborhood character will not change, we are not making any changes outside of the building. It's a big building, I'm assuming that you all know which building we're talking about, right? So we're not modifying anything on the outside. Very minor modification inside, we're required by regulations to have a, a mantra where we check I D for people entering the facility, so that's the only change that we are doing, we basically, where the old A T M was inside the building, that would become a window where we check I Ds. Okay, and odor should not be an issue, since everything's prepackaged. It would be an issue, we have carbon filters that we use, that can use, we haven't used, not used them, Four Six, but if there's an issue, that would pretty much eliminate any odor. Impacts on the environment, there should not be any changes to Four Six, so that's pretty much the same. And maybe to talk about the trash, maybe, so we will not have a dumpster, we don't have a dumpster right now. All trash will be moved to Acton, there are very strict rules, how we can discard waste and returns, for example, we cannot just put it in the trash, everything is tracked by the state, so it needs to go back to Acton, where we, if there's cannabis products, we have to, you know, destroy it according to
Can you clarify what you mean by Acton?
Our Acton store and facility.
Okay, so your, your facility in Acton?
Exactly, that's a co-located facility where we grow, and also is a medical, so the medical only in Acton.
Got it, for the public record, I didn't want it to sound like you're just bringing it to Acton.
Thank you, yes, thanks, thanks for that, yeah, so everything is all products are destroyed on camera, everything is recorded by weights and so on, and inspectors come in, where they actually review the cameras. When we do it, you do two people with, with so, so no trash left in Mainers, so everything goes, that's, it goes with paper, plastic as well. And we recycle everything, and we have resourced by glass, plastic, paper, and we're very small amount of trash right now that I'm supposed to trash. Next. Financial impact hasn't changed, still the same, three percent tax revenue, and then three percent of the host community agreements. We are going to hire more employees, employees, both Acton and Mainers, but like I said before, Mainers residents, they have priority. So we'll probably hire two, two, five new employees in Mainers. All right, next, this is the new section, so there is a handicap parking space right outside the bank building, Seventeen Nathan Street, we're going to install the bike racks, that's new from compared to three years ago. So Wayne suggested, I'll talk to W and Phil, I can't remember here. We talked about that we should install it, or we should rely on W to, to provide some location.
I'm not sure how Wayne wants to handle that, I'm sure
Yeah, I'm sure that
Yeah, yeah.
And also, there's an ADA compliant ramp outside of the building, and the counters inside the building, they will be used because they're excellent shape, and they're all already ADA compliant. So very minor construction, pretty much everything is in, so so the zoning, still same, simple business. The big change, I guess, is the business use from business to merchant park, that's only the change really, and according to the architect, it's basically just a minor classification. Okay, next. So I guess here you see the
I printed that out.
The parcel map. So the yellow dots are the light fixtures, the existing light fixtures. The police chief already approved the security plan with, with the outside lighting. And it's kind of hard to see, but over here, that's where we propose to have bike racks installed. Next slide. You can see
The next slide is on reverse.
And you'll see the magnification of the back area, so the bike racks, the classification from the architect. But basically, existing lighting will be the same, if we need to provide it to come be the dark sky lighting.
Yes.
We will currently have that, but I noticed that one light fixture probably needs to be replaced.
Bill, regarding lighting, is, is that something that you should consider, or is that going to be done under the building code with the building commissioner?
I think the first thing is, there's going to be a security requirement, so please. But the additional lighting, um, I mean, it's a, this board and what I did, yeah, we were just talking about the need to, there is existing lighting there, and the need to just, just have, you know, anything that goes in the dark sky compliant.
I, I also consider the lighting to be a possible consideration for the D O D special permit, it requires enhancement to the pedestrian environment. No, that's the entire presentation right now, so I'm available for any questions.
Are you keeping the clock?
Which one, because?
The big one outside.
Yes, yeah, everything stays the same. I'm not sure if you know, but Jim, you probably know, there is a clock inside the bank building, which is fairly large, like something.
I can't wait to see it, I have, I'm not, I was never a middle six savings bank.
Yeah, but it's actually covered up, because the, the clock is a public drop too.
Oh, great.
But, no, so we were keeping the outside clock.
You got a lot more space in this.
Oh, yeah.
Tremendous, you know.
And a vault, that would be.
Yes, and we were, we're going to use that, and it's beautiful, it's, I told Jim earlier, I did some research, or going to the person who designed and built the safe, Benjamin F. Tripp, he lives in Newton, and he actually passed away roughly seventy-five years ago, seventy-four, seventy-five years ago. That means that that safe is more than a hundred years old, and it's still functional, and we will use it.
I have a, I have a few items, I want to categorize the things that we should discuss, so lighting, we can discuss. Parking, park is, should parking be part of this conversation, Bill?
You know, well, I know, Wayne jumped in on this, because there was some parking proposed, and I think you guys saw, I can't remember, we must add something, because I remember
Okay, so may, maybe parking, maybe traffic, but we can talk bike racks, we can talk, and we talked with Wayne about maybe some other engineering items, but what other categories, is that some reasonable?
Oh, well, I want to talk about possible conditions and purpose, building aside, but purpose, I need to commit that. And
So maybe we focus on the engineering and sort of design items? And then we can work towards those items afterwards?
True.
Okay. Wayne, can you, can you join us, Wayne? Are you there?
I can hear you guys, can you hear me?
Thanks, Wayne. So you, you've been working with the applicant offline on this, I believe, and you, you're familiar with the presentation and the designs?
Correct.
You, can you just provide us a status of where we're at, or are things, from your point of view, an engineering point of view, are, are your discussions still pending, do you, do you need more time with the applicant, or do you feel like we're in a good place, and then obviously, you can elaborate on the things we need to know about?
Sure, Mister Chairman, so we had, Bill and I and Julia had a discussion with Olaf last week. And as Bill alluded to, Mister Nemser alluded to, the applicant had repeat, previously had, I, let's say, offered to provide three or four parking spaces on the triangular property behind his building, that is his property. We talked about that a little bit, and based on the let's say, unorganized parking pattern that exists behind all those buildings, I think we kind of all mutually agreed that he would probably be better off not committing to providing those spaces on his land, and just relying on the existing parking in the basin area in the municipal lot, on the street, et cetera, as his current business does now. So this revised application that he sent in yesterday reflects the removal of the previously discussed parking, so that, and I, I support it, it, this current application in that regard. We can talk more about parking, or I have a couple other comments, Mister Chairman, at your discretion.
Just so I understand, the, the logistics of that larger sort of parking lot area present itself as challenging to, to provide parking spaces in the back of this building? Did I understand that correctly?
Correct.
Sort of challenge?
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if the concern is providing parking spaces for public, your customer use is an issue, but frankly, I would love to see as many employee employees as possible park on that property, so they don't use the public parking, because we need the public parking, and frankly, in order to meet the D O D special permits, you know, if they're able to provide some employee parking on site, that will go a long way toward needed D O D special permit considerations.
Mister Chairman, may I share my screen?
Yes.
Bill or Julia, you have to give me permission.
You got it.
So, this was, these are the observations that I had, this is an aerial map that shows the applicant's building. And also shows this is a, an excerpt from a survey that was done of the entire basin area, and you can see the triangular piece of land that clearly is part of the applicant's property of the old savings bank, Middle Six Savings Bank. If you look at the current parking configuration, I guess the best way I can describe it is, nothing is striped, and it seems to be haphazard, in my opinion, and the applicant had previously discussed providing some, you know, perpendicular spaces abutting his building. That entered into a larger conversation, that we were concerned that striping those spots like that may make some of the other parking that currently exists back here challenging, number one. And then the next question that I think we would all have to dive into is if pop, if the public is allowed to park back here, now, Bill brought up a, a different comment relative to employee parking, but I'm not sure the issue is any different. I think that the applicant would have to prove that there's an accessible pedestrian route from the back of that lot to the front of the lot, because the applicant told us that there's no rear public access. And I don't know how familiar you guys are with this, but there's a small, hopefully you can see my cursor, I know it's a little faint. There's a small driveway here that can no, be no more than ten to twelve feet wide. It has no sidewalks and no safe pedestrian pathway. However, it's not even However, it's not even, if you look at the property plan, it's not even the applicant's property. So I don't think it was, I don't personally, I don't think it's fair to burden the applicant with being able to being challenged with providing a pedestrian pathway to the front of his building from those parking spaces. So that's kind of why we decided it made more sense to eliminate proposing the parking on his property. I know that was a long-winded answer, but hopefully that explains a little.
We could also pull up, this would be helpful, the G I S aerial with the overlay. They're not going to be exact survey lines, but it gives you an idea of the property.
So which one is that?
I would just pull it up on Mass Network.
So this is the app, this is the plan that Olaf provided. This is from a licensed survey, so these are the, these are the property lines. That, his property is constrained in green. So there's no way for him to provide a pedestrian access route from the back of the building to the front on his property. And frankly, I don't think there's enough space on that right of way to provide one and also provide a vehicular pathway, as you can see here, it indicates it's only twelve feet wide.
Mr. Chairman, answer the question. This is for, really for Bill on it. With employee parking. Wouldn't, I can't remember the last one we did, but we specified that parking has to be for boys either in River Lot or I think we did one out towards the Veterans Memorial Park. Would that take care of that concern if we conditioned it on that? Like, for example, employees park at River Street Lot.
Um, that would in my mind, make the criteria for effectiveness of the parking space allocation, yes. Although frankly, I just don't see the problem with a couple of his employees parking back there like everybody's always done. Customers, totally not. No real people in public should go back in that little corner. But a couple of employee cars, if he wanted to do that, and if he said he's going to do that, it's like, well, that too meets the criteria for effectiveness, parking allocation.
Would you guys like Julia to pull up her, work her magic and pull up for?
What do you, what do you want me to share or pull up? I just, I couldn't hear you, Bill.
I don't, I don't need, does anyone need to see this further? I think I have the context. I don't need to see anything else.
Just trying to meet the
I, I get this, I, I understand why striping will be challenging here, so I don't necessarily want to stripe. But I agree with Bill that it does help meet the criteria. So Olaf, if you're willing to use that as employee parking. I don't want to, I don't want to put too many details in the decision about what that looks like. But if you say that this can be used for employee parking, I think that does help the case.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's perfect. And just to let you guys know that currently our staff, we don't park on Mason Street or Main Street at all. We haven't started all our employees to park behind Subway or in the basin, but most people that park in behind Subway. I'm sorry, not Subway, Subway. And we also, like you said, pointed out, we can have staff park here as well if we need to. So that's totally okay. Frankly, I would propose that the town may have put a ruling place or something that store owners do not park on Mason Street or Main Street.
The giant.
Give them a sticker or something like that to that by vehicles because most of the vendors are claiming all of the parking spaces on our store owners. And they're, they're not, I don't know why they don't park away from the store. Yeah, I think that would, that would open up a lot of parking directly on Mason and Main Street.
I think that when we later, this is separate from your application, but when we consider this parking area, these dumpsters, this whole situation, this is part of our concerns, right? This man owns the property. And because of the rest of the situation, you know, I think it, we need to figure it out.
I recall a discussion during the first time you came with the permits a few years ago about the River Street parking lot. I don't know if that was put into the decision.
It wasn't.
I remember though, that, that we were discussing whether it'd be appropriate for employees to park in River Street. Do you know the River Street parking lot?
Yeah, we instructed employees to park there if they wanted to. So I think the discussion was either the River Street parking lot or behind Subway.
We have, it was open tables, employees are supposed to park over there. Somebody else could came through.
It could be, either way, I think.
Any, yeah, I'm sorry.
So I think that's a very useful parking lot to utilize because now it's in a state that is, did we do the improvements on it?
We are getting approval Thursday, hopefully continue to do the improvements to make it also. Because right now it is not, it doesn't speak, it is, but it doesn't feel very steep with the lighting. It's very dark there at night. So the lighting improvements would make it very reasonable to have people be parked there at any time.
Most likely, it sounds like those improvements will be done before you have occupancy.
Oh, for sure.
They have to be because it's a grant.
Yeah, we have till July first.
No, yeah, okay, so, yeah, so, you know, that, that, that parking lot becomes more efficient.
And if I may add, since many of our staff, they are mainly there after they've driven, they have to walk to work.
Wayne, do you have other items you'd like to discuss that you should bring to our attention besides parking?
Yeah, just a couple. And just to kind of close the book on, from it, on my perspective, when we discussed the parking. And I've been having a little trouble with some of the audio of a couple of folks, so bear with me if you close the book on this. Personally, if there were a few areas or signs put up on the building that talked about specific employee parking. I personally don't have an issue with that. I think that actual navigating some of the existing parking back there may still be challenging for this property owner and the others, as you can see from this graphic that I've got on the screen. It's not going to be easy if you've got a couple of people parked, you know, perpendicular to the building here for any of these other people that currently park like this, you know. Maybe that means they can't park like that. Nothing's really striped anywhere, so maybe it doesn't matter. So that's, that's something that the board can discuss, but I don't really have an issue with employee parking, as Bill mentioned it. Couple of minor things. Olaf, just for clarification. A couple of places in the application, it talks about installing bike racks, yet then it talks about providing funds to the town to install. So can somewhere just be clear either to the board or in approval, what your intention is, or is it both?
I leave it up to the board, what you prefer.
Wayne, do we, do we have input on types of bike racks, locations of bike racks, of things of that nature? Do we have a specification on a bike rack for town?
Yeah, we could certainly, you could put it in if, if the board so desires. Add it to the decision that the, that the rack would be approved by D P W. We've, we have a style that we've purchased before, so we could certainly go with that. My, my concern is on Olaf's plan, let me see if I can find it. He shows bike racks and then he talks about donating bike racks to the town. So I just want to be clear, like, what if, we may not want to put them here. Right, so is he going to put them here and give two to the town? I just want it, him to be clear to the board.
I think, I think you had mentioned giving the D P W leeway to make decisions about that. Honestly, if the back is such a mess that pedestrians and customers shouldn't be back there. I'm not sure if bike racks in the back is the best idea. Perhaps D P W might be able to find a place in front that it would be appropriate adjacent to the sidewalk, obviously not blocking anything. But I personally would prefer either funds or, you know, again, giving D P W the job of finding a good spot.
I agree with Natalie on that personally.
So is the intent for the bike racks to be for this property? Because, I mean, there are already racks on Mason Street and they're not used at all, really.
Hey, I'm fixed to differ.
I don't know. They've been sitting there, I mean, they just don't get used. Nothing to justify.
So I'm the advocate of bike racks, so I'll take this one on. So in looking at, you know, we, there is a parking concern. And in the downtown district, we are trying to encourage more pedestrian and bike infrastructure. So this is a way that we're not having parking. We can, you know, but we're providing some sort of other pedestrian bike infrastructure than encouraging that use over vehicles.
Yeah, but I'm saying putting bike racks downtown does not meet those objectives. I mean, we put the bike racks in and tell page for them, that's how long ago it was. You know, they got, they weren't used and they got tore out. Then we put a bunch more in. And they rarely get used. I got one right in front of my door and, you know, I've seen one bike in five years park it. So I'm just saying, if, if, if the applicant is doing this to help the pedestrian environment or the complete streets of downtown, maybe investing in bike racks isn't the best way to go? Because they're relatively ineffective solution for our particular downtown.
Well, let's take a step back. I asked Olaf to see what his thoughts were on the complete streets policy. It's something that I'm trying to put more in the forefront of our work. And it's something that Olaf and I believe Wayne, Bill and Julia have discussed and came up with. My, my intent is to see how we can work together to meet the complete streets policy. But I don't have a sense of what's going to be effective. I don't know if bike racks will be effective. I don't know what locations will be effective. I don't know what other possibilities there are for supporting complete streets. But the point is, is to support complete streets. So maybe, maybe there is something that's more effective that can be thought of besides a bike rack. That's possible, and I'm willing to hold space to see what that can be. But I don't know.
Frankly, I'm sure we can find a curb ramp that would be more useful to more people than a couple of bike racks.
Could be true too, so, but I don't know. So my, what I'm challenged on this is I don't know, I don't have good quality information. Maybe we do, maybe the town does. But I don't, I don't have good quality information in front of me that shows that this is an effective decision, that we've identified a gap, we've identified a problem, and this is a way to help out with the complete streets. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So if there is a reason why bike racks are a good option here, I think we should demonstrate that. And if there's other items that would be helpful, then we should demonstrate that too. Maybe it is a ramp, right?
And I think that they, that's, you know, it opens up a bigger conversation, including a lot in this project. But, you know, when it comes to bike racks, you know, in pedestrian and bicycle movement, and, you know, we don't, we don't have any studies on that. Not in the movement in downtown. And where the best place for these bike racks were to be, that makes sense for bicycle users. I think they were, they were put in and into an assortment of places as a test. Bill, let me know if I'm wrong in this. You know, across town to make sure that there was plenty in all the areas. But I don't think you guys were looking at like, you know, doing pet counts or, you know, bike counts to see where people were going and what movement makes that. So I think we're just, yes, we don't have data to back up any.
Well, the way we did that originally, we got the, the racks from M A P C. We had thirty or forty, we bought. And we had at the time, we had a complete streets group that was, the intent was, I was trying to get a, you know, a block of people that were interested in this sort of thing, and we worked with quite a lot. So we brought two people that are in mass bike. Myself and it was, I guess it was Aaron, that was the D P W director. And we went throughout towns and had them pick out what they thought were most appropriate based on the others. So we hit all those spots and there's a map. I mean, we have the map that we did, we color coded it, but it was based strictly on anecdote from these members. But then we saved some of the bike racks and we responded to requests for them. So for example, the comic book store wanted, they were, they have a lot of bike traffic apparently. They wanted them, I can't remember who else did. But that, and that's how that works. So it wasn't like, you know, we did an analysis of bike, like that. But bike is, but, but that was, that was a primitive way we did it, but was that it?
I, I think the tree scape is a good example on how I would prefer this to proceed is that we spent time identifying where it would be appropriate to plant trees based on need. Right, remember? Isn't that how we approached it? And we said, here's an opportunity, we can, we can plant, we can put proper, we can choose the proper tree, choose, choose the proper location based on the need and the larger picture design. And I'd like, I'd like these types of conversations to be similar to that. Right, so it's tied to the larger picture, larger design. And I'm not saying that it's not like you weren't thinking, right? But we do need to demonstrate that somehow.
You know, the other option could also be that, you know, that money that would go towards bike racks gets put into and gets donated to the D P W, gets put into an account. So that when we, we don't lose the opportunity to get a commitment, that's very expensive. But we also aren't making choices that are, are based on, on anything.
Tied to larger picture.
Yeah, yeah, and then we have time to think about these things.
I, something like that I like better, for sure.
Bill, do we still have the downtown enhancement account?
Not of any consequence. It's down the end and a little bit we have still is committed for something, but I tried for something else. The other thing the board may want to consider also is that you know, there are other initiatives in immediate area that would be consistent with complete streets. Said that if, you know, if it was a fund that you were, or a specific project, but there are others that would be. For example, we have right now, we have an initiative, well, Veterans Memorial Park has all kinds of stuff. And we have like a menu there, things that, you know, we're working at, certainly it's a pedestrian environment. We have we're working on, working on the dumpster ground area. And so that there would be something where there would be potential.
Which we, and we applied for a bike rack in that. In the shared streets grant for the dumpster crowd in that area. I applied for also the purchase of a bike rack.
Yeah, so, so there's, in other words, there are initiatives that would benefit from the confusion. I guess also another one that is going now is
Sorry, Bill. I, I think that's for this conversation, I think that's enough. And we can figure out, we can talk more, not during, you know, admin, we can figure this out. We'll call it off. Talk more about it.
I should, that was it.
But, but thank you all, because I, I am trying to put complete streets more front and center, and I appreciate your efforts to support that. So we're going to have to talk more about figuring out what to do with, with that contribution. But I do, I, I'm leaning towards it being, putting something away for future use, I think. Because I just don't see us having something that we can really stand in time for the, for this applicant.
And that's, I just don't want to lose the opportunity for construction, you know? That's what I
So how does, to the board, how does that sound? Thinking more in terms of a future contribution with some type of value added to it.
How would that be ordered, you know?
I don't know, that's why we're going to
Okay, good.
And I think Bill contrasted his experience with this too about how to
Yeah, I mean, the amount we're talking about is like Yeah, I mean, the amount we're talking about is like.
I don't know what bike racks cost, so wait, wait, um, maybe, maybe something to think about is to work with Justin and Julie to figure out. Um, what's the appropriate number here based on of of the bike rack contribution, so it'd have to be quite back to our bike rack spend, of course.
Yep, we, I can get your price for um what they're, uh, I guess, available to the general public for, not maybe what we purchased them for.
Um, but shouldn't we consider, I mean, I think this, in in this set of agreement, um, Olaf and um. Uh, Wayne, it would be, the options would be that the applicant in general would install, or D P W would install. And so I think the price is more, the number is closer to what installation is, not just purchase price.
Correct.
I don't have a lot of, I I'm less experienced in this particular realm.
No, I agree, Chairman, I agree, that's appropriate, purchase and installation.
So, in, you know, I'm. But I don't, it'd be helpful to figure out truly what that number should be. Cause I don't, I don't, I can't.
I can help determine that, Mr. Chairman, we've got a bike purchase and installation.
Yeah, and I want. Sure, and my understanding, the the appropriate number would be. What typically D P W would charge if they were doing the work.
Yep.
Right? Cause it needs to be, it needs to be consistent with with how the town, I want to hold the town to the same standard as every other. Everyone's held to the same standard. Um, Wayne, can, would you like to continue on with other items?
Sure, uh, I have um just a couple more comments, and they all revolve around lighting, so I guess I'll just, I'll just kind of run through it as quickly as I can, so. Um, Olaf, you mentioned that the police chief has uh approved your security plan, including the lighting. Uh, Bill, uh, Memzer, do you have an email from the police chief confirming that he's approved the project and the lighting and and security plan?
I do not, I had any, I I had, he had no comments, there was a no comment.
So I guess I just asked that Olaf provide to Bill uh some uh confirmation that the police chief has signed off on that, just for the board's records.
And just so we understand, Olaf, that is that, did Wayne get that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So the police chief, you did have a conversation with the police chief, and he did did approve, from your understanding, at least approved the security plan, the lighting scheme?
Uh, that is correct, we submitted the security plans to the police, amended uh security plan. Uh, a few months ago, and the police chief approved it, and obviously he needs to see the physical implementation of it, but uh, yeah, um. What we proposed, he uh agreed to.
Could you send me that, so I have something for record for these.
Are there any security cameras around, I, near the sliding?
We will have, yes, uh, most of the cameras that the bank used, uh, the wiring will be reused. But we will also add additional cameras.
Also in the back.
Yes, there will be, uh, I prefer, I guess, uh. Maybe the police chief should uh discuss that, because uh opposite security related, but yeah, it would be.
Especially around that area.
Yes, uh, the building will be covered, actually by regulations, state regulations, we need to have camera surveillance access, three hundred and sixty degree around the building.
So is that, so is that a question we asked before, after we say? But the bank did have security at one time, we could probably use their cameras as well.
No, um, but they're not good enough, actually, frankly, uh, a little bit too old, and and yeah, we would probably. Yeah, we we have way more uh security locations, because we are more regulated than pharmacies, food restaurants, banks. Food costs, uh, retail locations, uh, so, you know, we have way more restrictions than the bank had, and we perform that. A way more security and cameras, probably twice.
Wayne, would you like to continue on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, so if we could just get documentation on that, that'd be great. Um, so in the application, um, there's a note, and I guess, Olaf, I'm just asking, it says. The lights will be replaced if needed. Um, and I'm trying to determine who's gonna, who will determine whether the lights need to be replaced. Um, I think myself, especially, and I I I'm guessing the board would be much more comfortable if. All the existing lights were replaced with new lights, so that's a question. Um, that, and let me just complete, and then I'll I'll turn it over to you to respond. Um, we had talked about this when we met, um, the applicant has submitted, let me see if I can find it. Somewhere. A cut sheet on the um lights, which seem very um. You know, very uh pleasing as far as visually and so forth. What I don't see anywhere, and I think it's kind of important, is I don't see any type, and it's possible I missed it, so please, if I have, let me know. But I don't see any type of light spread analysis, or even a picture of the light spread that indicates approximate foot candles per foot. So that the board can be able to judge whether this um. This uh luminaire is the appropriate luminaire that should be mounted to the side of the building in these locations. And for some reason, let me just find the right graphic, I'm sorry, those, yeah, five yellow locations. Um, to make sure that the spread is not, I don't think we're really too concerned with it being too little, but it's not too excessive.
Dude, well, Olaf, um, do you, do you have, have you, do you have experience with um. Lighting plans, that light scheme plans that shows the luminescence radiance of of different. It wouldn't be helpful for Wayne to pull up an example on what that looks like and why it's important?
Uh, I I thought we had that, uh, I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
And I, uh, if we need to update the the lighting picture, but I'm not sure if we do, uh, because there are some, most of them are working. I I know that one light was wrong, so, uh, because if if it ain't broke, why do you need to replace it, because uh. It seems to be functional, um.
Sorry, were those yellow locations, that's the current lighting, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great, yes.
So if you guys can see that my screen still, this is typically what the manufacturer can provide, and this is a poor example, but I'll just. So this is where the light is placed, and there's a spread of light that's provided based on whichever type of luminaire you're using. And just from the information that, uh, and and Olaf, it's really not. I'm not putting it on you, but you just need to talk to the manufacturer, from this, you know, this light luminaire. It's provides some type of a spread off the building face, and we just don't know how much or how little that is. And I think it's important to have an understanding, most importantly, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to beat this with a dead ho, like a dead horse here, but. Sometimes we see these lights go in and they're just too, way too bright for the surrounding businesses. Um, and I think it just, we need to have an understanding of how many foot candles these things put out, at what distance.
Yeah, Wayne, Wayne needs confirmation that the lights are appropriate for the space, from an engineering standpoint. Any, any other thoughts on lighting?
Yeah, I think that, talking about the one on Mason Street, right? I think it's fine for the ones in the back alley and the side alley, you know, whatever you need for scale, but, but the one on Nation Street. Matters, and I'm not sure that design is appropriate for the facade of the building, for one, but. What's the light there now? So this is the existing light. It's the exact same. Yes. Head and everything? Yeah, everything is uh existed, so that's why I'm saying that. I know, but it's the exact same fixture that you gave us in these. No, no, that's a new fixer, if we have to. That's what I'm trying to figure out, what's the current fix.
I think um Wayne's gonna bring up, uh, what has, what's on public record at least.
It just seems like an old building should have a pseudo faux bolt light. I appreciate very much more light on Mason Street, but.
Yeah.
Not an industrial security looking.
I I will say, um, tying to the characteristic of the neighborhood, Olaf, it's very, it's gonna be very helpful.
It's that thing, yeah.
Yeah.
And this one as well.
Can you zoom that in a little bit, Wayne?
Um, that's it, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I can't get closer.
Awesome.
If you.
But you can, you can see that it, it's clearly, um, it's some type of a light pack, and I totally understand Bill's question, it clearly doesn't. Let's say, um, augment downtown Maynard's typical ornamental style, like, ma- maybe like something like this, right? Right, something, I mean, Bill, I don't know, I'm just, you know, but something like that.
One right over the door is a, you know, a, a unique one, and I can't, I can't imagine switching that one out. That would be bad. The big one that's on the face of the building, up, up top. I guess that's the only light we get. The one next to the flag, right over the door, is a, it's a lantern, snake arm one, and, you know, I can't imagine that this fixture would be appropriate there. No, I don't think that's what we're talking about, is it, or are we talking about the one up on the.
I think it's this one, you know, Olaf, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you're talking about this unit.
Well, I guess, we're both, right, they're both working, this light and the lantern, so. So, but what changes are you gonna make to those, what we're looking at right now? Well, we prefer not to make any changes, because we believe that lighting is sufficient, except for the one that's broken. So we would leave. Which one's broken, one of those is broken? In the back, actually. I don't care about Mason Street, I'm good with the back, just talk to me about the Masons. Yeah, we would, we plan to keep it as is, but if you preferred, I would, that we, if we must change it, then we would change it. We were planning on uh using this existing uh lighting, because we don't know what's gonna happen if we try to remove that. And it's gonna look ugly, because if we put in different lights. Okay, all right, I was just confused when I saw the the uh cut sheets, I thought we were just switching out all the. No, only the ones that uh.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons off the board is is bringing us up, is we've, on our other projects, we've been doing on um. Main Street and maybe Nathan, we've tried to make an effort to improve the lighting on the um sidewalk itself that. Is more, um. And I think that's, that's what, am I right, Bill, is that what you're, they go that, and then aesthetically compatible with the existing motif?
Yeah, um, but, uh, this is a tough cycle, this is a far back, I I'm fine if it exists upstairs. Decade. Or, but I'm, I'd be cautious about switching it out with something.
Is the police chief, I assume the police chief views the lighting scheme on the front of the building sufficient?
Yes, as far as I know, but uh again, there's some other security, uh, we probably need. More lighting in the back by the building yard, so that's more than he's focused on, I don't think that he cares much about. But you you need to ask the police chief, that's, that is my understanding that this is not really related to the security. This is more just.
Our discussion is not about security, that's correct, yes, we're not discussing security light. Um, but it sounds like, as far as we know, we have no information that we should confirm, but it sounds like the police chief does not. Require any changes to the lighting scheme in front of the building. Of course, and so this is purely about our aesthetic. And the function, you know, if the, of the um. Illumination.
You're right, I did. I'm looking at from D O D criteria one, all the construction materials, architectural design.
I personally. Um, like the light above the doorway. I don't have a sense of the slide towards the top left, but I've never noticed this building having a lighting problem from my point of view. I think the illumination has always been very reasonable, and I've always liked the lighting scheme here. Or at least I never noticed it out of place.
You can also, um, so if you, if you back up, Wayne, uh, to the alley, uh, before. Yeah, that way, and then try to get that point of view.
Yeah, you can see it's the same style as next to the date on the front of the building?
Yeah, on the side, there's, there's two on that side, so, uh.
So apparently from our drive, you're, you're.
Deactivating those, right?
No, oh, I'm sorry, there, yeah, that that was probably missed in the drawing there, but they're lighting across uh three sixty around the building.
Okay.
Yeah, the broken one uh is, uh, I'm not sure, basically. Left side of the building in the back, so basically this position on the, on the side, it's kind of hard to explain, but if we have, yeah, perfect. Uh, this light seems to be a little bit, uh. They could, it's still lights, but it doesn't look like it's uh appropriate, so.
And I assume you're very fine with the lighting scheme in front?
Correct.
What are the thoughts on lighting schemes specifically in front, yeah?
Um, just, I would love for those two existing lights to be added to the, the. I mean, I know to put in that they exist, and again, it seems like overkill, but we've had problems with people. Lights dying and not being replaced, because they weren't on the, they weren't on the diagram.
She's asking to add the, all the lights to the lighting scheme plan here for the record.
Yes.
Right?
Here's this two on this side of the building.
We we just like complete records, it just saves conversations later on, that's all.
I agree.
Thank you. I I don't have any issue with the lighting, does, does anyone else want to a- add additional lighting here, or have thoughts on changes? To the front of the, where it is?
No, I think that, I mean, seeing what Wayne asked for, seeing the um, the candlelight illumination shape would be good, just in terms of the. Adjacent buildings, but um.
So to be specific then, um, it's gonna be helpful, we need Wayne to confirm the lighting scheme for the improved new light.
That if it is needed to use, be used to replace certain other lights.
So he just needs that illumination um map. So he can review it and just say that it makes sense. But Wayne, here's the thing where I run into, this is, the the police chief is is also dictating the sort of lighting scheme as well, so. I don't, you know, if if this is a replacement just on the back of the building, and the police chief has thoughts on that as well. Should we leave it to the police chief to determine the luminosity, or should we still have some input here? How we, how have we done it in the past?
It it's, uh, it's a very good question, Mr. Chairman, uh, honestly, it, right now. Um, I see some holes in this, in this application, Olaf, I'm sorry, I'm trying to work with you here, but like. We don't, we don't show the lights on this side of the building, and we show five lights here, I don't know which one needs to be replaced, it hasn't been indicated. Right, so it's very, even if you show me the illumination pattern for the proposed fixture. Which light is that applicable to, and what's the photometric spread for the existing lights? I don't know. So, that's why personally, I know it's extra money for you, but I'd be more comfortable if all the lights were replaced, and they were consistent. And you had something to judge that ba- based on, but, Mr. Chairman, you bring up a good point, maybe it's, this isn't even our concern, maybe this is the police chief's.
I think the front, I'm comfortable saying that the front is our purview. And that since the, the police chief's involved, I would defer to him for the other three sides lighting scheme, since those are. I think, I think the driver there is for security lighting. So I would, that would, that's my preference, Wayne and board, that we focus on the front. Um, Wayne, how do, can we, how do we get a luminosity plan for existing lights that have been there, in existing?
In unless we know what brand and model that is, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, I'm not sure you could.
We're not gonna get that information, because those lights look like they've been there for a long time.
Yep.
I I think this is a vision, I think this is a visual observation that we need to send Jim and anyone else that wants to accompany him on. For either in nighttime or morning.
I I vote for the town planner to spend some time out there walking around the building and looking at it.
You'll pay for that, be real.
Bill, I'll be glad to join you, we can do it together, how's that? I I don't want you to be afraid walking around the building by yourself.
Yeah, too late, that ship sailed.
Okay, so to 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 be specific, uh, we, this, I will, I'm instructing. The town in general to just review the lighting scheme in the front to make sure that it's reasonable, but we have known indication that it's not. Unreasonable at this time, and I don't want it, I'm not asking for any changes, our board members asking for any changes on the front. So at this time, we are not asking for any changes to the front of the building for lighting scheme. Unless there is some observation that we will, that mistest and necessitates us to require it. And that bar is a, it's not the lowest of bars, it's definitely not. And that bar is a, it's not the lowest of bars, it's definitely not the higher, you know, it's not the highest of bars, but it's a middle bar. So if there's really a black spot out there, then it's something we can discuss, but I think it's gonna be just.
But I would also have some luminosity coming from the, uh, sign. Is there with the, uh, temperature and the, I think that. Uh, I, I don't know whether it's down light, but at least it's light in that neighborhood.
I, I just think we need to get eyes on it and just confirm, it, to me, this is a confirmation that this is, that this looks okay.
Well, I would suggest that whatever the boards, uh, does see, then that, uh, we, we take cue from our earlier, uh, initiatives, and we ask that to come back forty-five days after opening, so kind of. And anything that needed to be adjusted, understand that we need to do it, so, you know.
Are we saying that, uh, does not need to go through the expensive, uh, evaluation study unless the chief wants it?
I, my preference, we can talk about it more, but my preference is to leave, leave the other three sides of the building. Up to the conversation about security of the police chief, because I don't want to get involved in that. Yeah, and, yeah, I think the only thing that, that a security sort of lighting scheme would have would be over lighting. Um, I don't know if there's an opportunity, Bill and Wayne, to have a conversation with the police chief, but if there is, that's great, do it, but otherwise, leave it alone. Um, okay, so that's lighting, um, Wayne, what other, what other items do you have?
That's it, Mr. Chairman, that's the conclusion of any comments I have, thank you.
Okay, so we don't need to discuss traffic, I, I am very comfortable not discussing traffic. There is no engineering that needs to be discussed, because there's no utilities being upgraded, or any, any changes to utilities. And we've discussed coming up with a, a value for, um, contribution towards the complete streets, and lieu of bike racks. And we've discussed parking, was there any other topics of the board, or, oh, oh, generally, not to the board, any, any other? Board, any thoughts, considerations?
I agree, I agree with you, potential conditions. In your application, you said you weren't gonna change the, the start of the building, so. Is that okay if we put that as a condition?
Absolutely, yeah, okay, except for the, if the police chief has some, uh, concerns, we do need to put security cameras on outside.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, I'm thinking, uh, my first, I think just the face of building, the one you see, you cover up asset bet savings. And then, would be okay if there was a condition that you kept the time temperature clock working for the duration of your special permit? Sounds there? I mean, I don't want to turn into a sicko sign, where it's, it's on trust fund, but. Be nice to keep it going for a while. And then, uh, this is a big one for you here. In your application, you, you put down that, you know, one of our criteria is economic, and we put down that. This provides, um, tax revenues to the town, and you mentioned the host community agreement, um, provides. Uh, additional tax revenue, and you said. The quote is provides the town with mayor with financial resources to be used at their discretion. So I know there's a fair amount of talk in the business about post-community agreements, and, you know, whether those fees are appropriate, and I just wondered if. You were amenable to a condition where that you would, um, for duration of special permit, not, um. Which is the word, no. Not try to.
Challenge.
Challenge the, uh, current, uh, post-community agreement provisions with regards to, uh, that extra percentage. I'm not sure I understand more, because. But you got, you got the three percent sales tax, right? And then you got the three percent host, correct, right? And so I'm saying, it's okay if there's a condition of a special permit, that you don't challenge that three percent host.
I would say is probably more appropriate to have that, that implemented with the board select them, because the select, the, the select board, they are the ones who are responsible for the host agreement, and, uh.
Well, I'm not, I'm not trying to set the number, I'm just saying, if it's in that agreement, you, you can't later challenge it. So places have, but, my, my point is, you put it in your application as one of the factors that we should consider in meeting our special permit criteria. Yep, so I'm just trying to hold it.
And we're, Bill's saying that we, we want, since that application package is what, how we base our decisions. If, if, if any applicant were then to change what was in the application package later on, in this case, he's talking about percentages and financials. Um, but let's, I'll take a different example, if we had an applicant that, in, in the application package said that they, he would provide off-site parking spaces for tenants. And that's what the decision, decision was approved on, and then later on, he rescinded and did not provide those parking spaces. That's, that's in contradiction to how we made our decision. So Bill just wants to make sure that, in the future, that the way we make our decision, that thing is going to be stable. And remain in place, does that make sense?
Yes, and I agree, that is totally okay and fine, uh, with the caveat, because the host could be renegotiated by the select board, for example.
It's, yeah, it's that you intend to honor which currently.
Correct, but if the cannabis control commission throws that out. You know, in my mind, this special permit would still be, assuming that this thing is a good place.
Yeah, we, we intend to, uh, comply with.
We could also put a condition in, Bill, especially if, if there was any changes to the host community agreement required, uh, to the landlord.
Not necessary to work.
Because you're talking, I know what you're talking about, and it's a good point, because it's, it's question, it was the community impact, the use of our community impact funds, now, yeah, in our case. You know, right now, this is easy to do that now, you know, but, but.
But it's justifying, that right there is, that criteria is justifying the special permit. So, yeah, so if we change that, then it, it undermines the justification, that's what it does, it does, so that, I, I, I really appreciate that.
And how do we, how do we word that?
That's why we have you and admin to figure it out.
Okay. Something resembling, you know, the applicant, uh, plans to follow the current town host community agreement language. Throughout the. Throughout the.
All special permits in the. See, I did cry.
Alright, and then, my only other comment is, um. So this is a brand new thing, so we're not actually taking information from the old one, this is a branded site, so. What hours of operation are being asked for this brand new site?
Can, can we?
And does it matter to us anymore, or do we just give up the, this stuff?
What I wanted to do was go through the previous conditions and see which ones are applicable, and then discuss those.
Okay. See which ones we might want to consider for this.
Yep, exactly, um, so before we do that, right now, I wanted to open up to public, um, uh, public opinion, what, what do we call it, Bill? Public comments, sorry. Um, I want to open up for public commentary at this time. For, there's no one in the room at this time, so I'm gonna turn to, uh, those that are on, on, joining us virtually. Uh, Bill and Julia, if you could monitor, and I will leave public comment open, um, while we continue to discuss, so if something comes up, please. You can use your raise hand feature now, or go off mute, and I will give you time. Uh, if not, you can, later on throughout this hearing, you can use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you, but I will leave public comment open from this point on.
We do need, uh, Mr. Chair, we've had some, we need to make sure that people identify themselves and. Address.
I'm not hearing any, or seeing any public comments or hand raises, so the public comment again will be period, will remain open, and feel free to join this conversation at any time. I'm, I'm happy to turn to the previous conditions of approval and discuss those, unless, Olaf, there's anything else you wanted to add at this time?
Okay, I did have some recommendations, um, that you might want to start with, and, uh, might help you on the section five of staff report, basically, um. But I, I, I would. Before you look at the original conditions, you know, we, I would say we would want to keep the actual one, which is the, uh, the modification.
Can you, can you explain what the modification is?
Yeah.
And, and since, and can you also bring it up, Bill, on screen?
I can't.
I can't, um, so that we're providing these documents for all seat.
Alright, wow, alright, it's on the, it's on the desk, oh no, we can't, we can't.
So we have to go in off of the, uh, agenda. See if you're able to log in as a.
But you don't need to log in.
No, I, I know, I wasn't logged in.
Oh, okay.
Now, the staff report is, uh. Okay, so section five of the staff report references attachment one, did I get that correct?
Right. Attachment one is both the, this is.
All right, Bill, why don't you run us through this in lights, or?
The original decision, uh, was. Very, um, sterile, and, um, we did it, it, it was the first, um, one we approved, and there was, it was definitely cautious. Um, after the, was this even opened? Some of the issues we were concerned about were not anything that was going to be a problem, uh, we amended, um. The, uh, original decision for two specific things. The first was that we, um, we. Allowed, uh, a ten P M closing time, whereas we restricted it earlier to eight P M. So the, the authorized hours are ten A M to ten P M. Um, and then the second modification that was made was we lifted the requirement for the appointment-only service. Uh, and I don't think, um, that was done in May of last year, so just about a year ago. And I've had no reports of any issues or any problems with those. The, um. And we'll see as you go on, if, behind that, then I have, um. Included the original approval and, uh. You, you could go down the, um, starting on section five, um, we could go through.
Yeah.
The original conditions?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do.
These are the original ones, so.
Okay, so we'll take this one out of ten, the first one is about operating hours, and I, I'm fine with keeping the ten to ten. Any discussion on operating hours?
I don't know if it's needed. Select board sets it as well.
Yes, if the select board changed it, would we have to then modify this?
The, the host community agreement is the, the controlling document. I think they left it, it was pretty broad in there, we put it at eight o'clock. I can't, I don't remember what the, what the. We were more stringent than the select, are you familiar, remember, with this, what were the?
Uh, the select board actually, uh, they claim that they are the licensing authority who are guarding open hours, so I, I'm not gonna step in. Ten, ten to ten, uh, is what, uh, the select board approved.
And that's what you have a.
Yes, exactly, so the planning boards, that were on the same level right now.
We don't want, we don't want this listed in two different places, so, let's get it. Second one is, um, applicant shall appear before the planning boards within forty-five days of opening establishment. Would you be willing to do that, it's just something in practice we're trying to do with applicants, just to come in briefly to discuss, to see how things are going.
Sure.
Kind of, I like to use it as, as a learning opportunity, too.
We won't put it as a public hearing, as a public meeting, and then if the, if you're okay with that, or, um.
Can we make it sixty days? Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't see to.
If there was a major issue, which. Can't imagine what it would be, but if there was, uh, and it had to come back as a public hearing. Then the applicant will be responsible for a public hearing, but this would just be a meeting to come in. Yeah, so it's basically the same condition with the exception of sixty days.
Yeah.
That he's coming time you open.
Jim's good, Jim looks dope to people. I'm sorry, you like to talk to people, right?
We are, of course.
The third one is the planning board retains all authority to modify or otherwise address all aspects of current any time. I'm fine with keeping that language unless there's a reason to change that. I mean, it's, it's just reiterating our authority anyways. The apple, number four, the applicant shall modify the exterior of the subject property based on the police department recommendations. Is this needed, is, is this needed? Doesn't hurt.
I have a little problem with the language giving absolute control of the front facade to the police.
Was it because of the, the whole, like, lighting issue of, you know, if they came back and said, you know, you need more lighting, then he wouldn't have to come back here?
This just allows him to do anything, he could say you could put, yeah, put bars on all the windows. You know, I just don't want to give him control of the.
Why don't we just change the condition to say that any, um, any potential or any proposed changes have, you know, for the exterior facade? Because the side act come.
I don't care about the rear or the side.
I don't need to hear about it unless it's.
Right, so. The bars on the window, I'm saying.
The reason why this was in here initially was that there is just uncertainty about the security conditions. And we just deferred fully to the police department at that time, all towns are kind of doing that.
Now we can pull back a little bit.
I think everyone's learned that there's, the security concerns were kind of a scarecrow. So it didn't. It, it didn't occur, they weren't, they weren't real.
You've been picking on me all night, so I won't mention next level.
Yeah.
But, um, do you want to strike? Do you want to strike for them?
I'm trying to think of a reason why it should be. I mean, you're going to modify based on. You're required to modify based on the police department's review of the security plan.
Correct.
Based on the most agreement.
Not the host agreement, but, uh, the police chief has, you know, he needs to approve the, the surveillance coverage, basically, so. But the only thing that will add to the outside is basically surveillance.
How about, how about the applicant shall. Meet the intent of the police chiefs, the, the police departments, the, the applicant shall. Receive an approved, an approval from the police department based on the security plan, will receive an approved security plan. The police department needs to approve the security plan.
I think that's law.
Yeah, that's cool, I mean, he has to do.
But where, where do we?
So this is the question, if the police chief comes in and says, actually, you do need a really super bright light that's crazy on the front of the building, we can't do anything about it anyway.
Yeah, we can.
What can we do?
Make it look pretty.
Yeah. Beautiful mackerel, right?
Right, if the bars on the window scenario happened.
Okay, so can we change this to say? No bars.
We have a condition that in front of the facade.
And any, and any changes must be.
Yes, any changes to the front of the facade must come before the. Cause then if you say you need a whatever watt security light, you can say, okay, it has to be a pretty.
Yeah.
Right?
How do you say that in the first?
For anyone.
Yeah.
We don't need to mention the, the police department at all, we just.
Nope.
Yep.
And even so, one, one of the conditions would be any changes, any proposed changes to the front of the building. Requires. SPGA approval, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
And that would, that would cover all, you know, the security cameras, the, the lights, the facade, everything.
I missed uh, you got. It's a blue. Cool building, I don't want.
Yeah.
Is that a, and, and historic building?
Yeah.
I'm excited a lot, you can take a seat.
Bill, is that is in a historic building?
I, I, it's on our historically significant list, it's not on the national list.
Okay.
Yeah. It is on the list.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the exterior alterations are gonna have to. But they go through um historical commission.
All right, so can we strike number five, cause it's about the appointment only?
Okay.
And strike number six because. The detail of the mayor's police to observe the traffic.
Hmm.
We don't need that.
Yeah.
The police still have their own rights to show up whenever they need to show up, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I struck number six, okay?
Five.
And seven?
Seven is discharge of passengers on the location.
Yeah, this, this is how the parking space out front. This is not applicable here.
We were worried at the time, remember?
Gonna pull over, drop off stuff.
So that's, that's not applicable. Number eight, the applicant shall notify the police events, there's a congregation of persons. I mean, keep it, I, I don't.
Not super concerned, but should we keep it?
Should be in the host agreement. Those, those.
We were really trying to be.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Well, that's what I mean, at the time it made sense.
Right.
At the time, it was, these are fine decisions. I, I'm willing to strike eight, I don't see a need for this.
Well, we also were concerned because it was on the corner.
Right.
You know, tight, listen now.
Right, yeah, okay. Uh nine, it says as directed by GPW, oh, so this is, there's two provisions here. One is to provide signage and one is to provide trees. And neither one of those are appropriate anymore, so nine is not appropriate, but nine can be changed. To, same language can be changed to um. Some, some value. Or contribution towards complete streets.
So.
Destruction, yeah.
In it. When we were talking before, I did look up what we had submitted for our shared streets grant. And obviously, there are many different types of bike racks and it all depends on, on what, you know, is gonna work for the sidewalk and, and all of those things. Um but I, a thousand dollars was the one that we, um that's how much money I asked for, for the one that I'm trying to get in the, the Naylor Court area. Um so I think that that would cover, and it's a, it's a larger temporary um bike rack. But Wayne, let me know if that would be uh an adequate number to cover a smaller bike rack and as well as installation.
I think that, so you're saying, is that per each or is that for both?
Your price is a big multi bike rack versus the two.
Yeah, so, so mine was a temporary bike rack, but in looking at the, so they would have to cut out those sidewalk panels and then redo them. Um and so if you're looking at two bike racks and two sidewalk panels.
Hold on, hold on, are you, are you? Would, do you have a strong preference for finalizing this tonight? Because there's definitely some items pending.
Okay.
Um that I think you, you would have a much better decision and we would have a better consensus if we could. Figure those last couple items out, like um, and Wayne has, Wayne wants to, Wayne just wants to see the lighting items. I believe, still Wayne, right? Was there any other pending items, Wayne?
See? Just look at my notes one more time, Mr. Chairman.
Um.
Also, I'm. You're looking for a, a, a price for a bike rack for including purchase and installation. Bill and I are gonna look at the lighting. Um and I didn't have anything else other than providing documentation from the police chief that he's approved everything.
Okay. It, it would be cleaner to just wait until, continue this to the next available meeting. Um but I don't know what that does for your schedule and everything else.
Yeah, it would be beneficial if we, uh, we see the decision, uh, can we do something like that, we commit to five hundred dollars for bike racks? As funds, and it's up to the town manager to install them at appropriate places. Uh is that appropriate?
I, I would say that the number will be higher if we decided to, tonight, and the number will come down if we spend time. And in the, in the meantime, figuring out the number.
Seven fifty. Oh, seven fifty.
I, I think these things cost a lot more.
How many bikes is a full one bike rack?
Well, and that's, that's what, there's, there's that, the conversation that we need to decide is it depends on where it goes and then how big is that sidewalk panel and you need to replace the whole thing, and then if you're, you know. Looking at parking and not, uh, parking of the vehicle, the bikes to not um disturb pedestrian, you know, there's, there is like, it, it's. That's why I was looking at trying to figure out what I had available, like, to get you guys a, a number quickly, um and that's what I.
You guys, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if you guys were looking for a, a, off of the, off the napkin number. Uh my guess would be that the bike racks cost probably three hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars each and probably three hundred dollars to install it, so six fifty. Installed and purchased and installed, so if you were gonna do two, um thirteen hundred dollars. Would be the number that I would give you without looking further right now.
That's. Yeah, so, I'm, I, that's how I would come to the number two, you, you know, you double the, you know, you add the labor costs, which is the same as the equipment material cost. And then you get to it that way, that is a best practice.
And then put it in the, the, like the. It, it would say that you could only, it would be a donation fund towards bike racks installation on Mason Street.
Or. I would say.
Yeah, of course.
I would say you can complete streets.
Yes, try, try to, yeah, if we leave it that way, if we, if we figure out that it can't go exactly in front of. Your business, but it, it fits really well in a different area, you know, you're donating those funds for the purpose of complete streets. Um and then we're not locked into trying to figure out something that does not work.
It's two bike racks, so I think that I'm comfortable with that number now, um but I think if you spend time working with Wayne over the next couple weeks, you might feel, get that number down a little bit, but it's your choice.
I'm okay with that number right now.
Okay, so the condition will be um a, a donation of thirteen hundred dollars. Towards complete streets enhancements, and then I'll, I'll allow Julia, you and Bill to figure out the appropriate language. On where that, how that works.
And the deliver.
Maybe, maybe talk to, maybe talk to Megan and figure out the exact language for that.
Yep.
Got it.
But that's the general idea, I think, here.
Can we specify in the DOD?
Uh yes, we can specify in the DOD. Yes, it should definitely.
Yeah.
Be on DOD.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want this, I live, I don't live with you, you shouldn't, it's not applicable to your lives. And it's not appropriate.
All right, so.
Run.
Can we strike number nine then?
Ten.
Strike number ten.
Place it back, ten.
Eleven.
Do we need eleven?
No, I don't figure you.
No? No, yeah. So the last one is a special permits valid for two years?
Yeah, that's, that's in our, um, that's, that's, I think that was in our file.
Yeah. Okay, great. So, but if it's in our file, why do we need to say that?
I'm not sure if it's.
Okay. If it's in there, I won't put it in. So that, that means every applicant would have to come back every two years.
I think that's what was for now.
I think you're right, I think it was that, but I don't know if it's written down, I don't know.
I mean, what you guys are looking at. Um I, Julia, can you check if there's any public comments?
Linda Thayer. Of course, you don't apply something like number twelve in the permit, which seems tend to be provided.
Yeah.
Some virtual, it, it, it tells it for the applicant antelope.
Hi, Linda. Do you wanna make a public comment?
Sure, I, I, I didn't know if Mr. Coleman was still speaking, Mr. Chair, if I could just ask, um, thank you. Uh I'm speaking, Linda Thayer, fourteen Chandler Street, speaking on, you know, just for myself, not representing anyone, um I just wanna say from. I, I haven't heard anything negative about um. Masswell Springs' presence downtown as far as businesses goes, and I, I spend a fair amount of time speaking with businesses down there, so. Um they've been, as far as I know, great neighbors, so I'm excited that they're. Not leaving, but, but moving across the street. I, I do have one concern about when you were talking about the um frontage, you know, it seemed like there's a lot of focus on the front of the building, Mason Street. And there is a strong initiative to improve Naylor Court, so I would ask the board to just consider um. You know, it, it sounded like there wasn't much attention being paid to that. Um area of the building, and, and I would just ask it, I'm not looking for major improvements, but. Also, it, it sounded like there wasn't much concern over it, and I'd like you to reconsider that and think about the, the impact that we could have there. If we did pay some attention to it. So, I think there's a, there's an area there that may have been a walk-in ATM or um. I'm mixing up my bank buildings, so I'm trying to think, I could be talking about the wrong one, maybe that one doesn't have it. Um but just not to, not to. Overlook the back of the building, does any of that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense, Linda, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, have you put thought into the back of the building and, yeah, is there any general improvements or what's, I, I don't have a sense of the condition on the backside.
I, I think it's fine as is, so I'm not sure why we need to do anything, but.
I think it's in context to the larger sort of connection to the whole area.
Well, I back him up on that because if we're talking about Bank of America, that is visible from the base. This particular building, that little corner, nine out of ten people would be confined, it has no visibility whatsoever, so. I don't think it's a problem.
Additionally.
So let, let me, I, I, I think you're right, Bill, that, that I, I was picturing the wrong building, so I apologize for that. I, what it's more directed with was when you were talking about the lighting and how, um whatever impact that has or what's used, I, I think I, I just want. I don't want you to not consider whatever is installed for lighting and security um that, that somehow it's, it's. It's not just utilitarian, but it could also be aesthetics if, um, if that were the case, and again, the, the building itself, yes, I agree, it is fine, it was the other building I was thinking of. But I'm, it, it just, it seems like there was much more concern about the front. And I just wouldn't want to, you know, two years from now regret that we didn't, you know, that we just said, sure, put in. Whatever lights, so. Just asking you to consider the entire property, not just one side of it, I think that's the easiest way to say it, thank you.
Thanks, Linda, I appreciate that. Um it, Wayne and Bill, as, as we, as you, as you find out what the police chief is looking towards for lighting scheme back there.
Hmm.
Um can you please consider Linda's comment in terms of the, you know, the property lighting itself and, and the, the. It, just, just how it connects to the adjacent properties and. The pictures it shows, and I think she said it, said it pretty well, um may, if there's ways to. Um to satisfy uh security. Um reasoning and also not have it be completely utilitarian, I think that would be obviously beneficial for everyone. So can we have security lighting that also helps enhance the feel? Because this whole area is, we're all trying to work that Naylor Court towards a better condition. Does that make sense? So I don't wanna put anything, I, I don't wanna put anything into the condition of, of the special permit that will dictate. And in, in conflict with security concerns, but I think we can do kind of both with conversations.
Well, do you want me, we have the condition for the facade, the new changes to the facade. Uh have to come for the board, why not just change it to the entire, to the structure?
Well, so these lights that have been presented, if, if Wayne gets an appropriate. Photometric, whatever you call it, for the individual fixtures, to me, they look fine, they look quite neutral, they look kind of um basic, honestly, better looking than the yellowed ones that are currently there. So therefore, if this was the replacement, I don't want him to have to come before us again to say, I wanna replace the one on.
Oh, no, understood, understood, I.
So, yeah. I think that having a condition, right, that the, that the further, the extra page of the light, the light information is presented to Wayne. And as long as he deems it appropriate in terms of, um, he and the police chief, right, deem it appropriate for the. Exterior three, three other sides of the building in terms of um security and. Illumination, I'm fine with how it looks aesthetically, personally, and I've seen the back of the building. And other than that, it looks.
So it's a request just to be, if we, when we can, just to be thoughtful of other considerations.
So that's another condition, yeah?
I, I don't wanna condition it, I don't personally, we can talk about it.
There's a condition to get him the other page of the thing.
Oh, that will be a condition, we satisfy Wayne's consideration, yeah, yeah, that would be. So that we can, let's go over these conditions again.
Let me go to my draft for the ones that are not.
Listen to this, this is what I got, your conditions, Bill.
Okay.
Um number three, the previous condition, the planning board retains authority to modify. This aspect of the permanent time.
Right.
Number two, right, but it's sixty days.
It's right. Oh, yeah, sorry, okay, start over. Yeah, um applicant shall visit the planning board in sixty days.
Yeah, the one, actually, no, one.
No, we struck, we struck one.
Oh, we're gonna strike it on.
Yeah, the hours are gonna be.
So, so we'll, I'm gonna, the numbers I'm gonna use are gonna be the new condition numbers, so condition one. Will be, the applicant will visit us in sixty days. Condition two will be. The planning board retains all authority to modify or otherwise address all aspects of the permanent anytime. That'll be condition two.
Hmm.
Um condition three will be that. The applicant shall not change. The facade, the front facade of the building without. Without planning board approval.
Right.
SPGA. Yeah. So, and then condition four will be. The um thirteen hundred dollars donated to uh complete streets. Funding, and however we decide to word that.
In the DOD.
Inside the DOD. Inside the DOD, of course, Bill, right? And then the final, not the final condition, the next condition will be that, that as Jim noted out, noted earlier, it's helpful to have this. The, it's number twelve on this list, Julia. Um, the special permit will be valid in two years.
So that is in the, um.
We do want, we do want to keep that.
It's in the bylaws as well.
But Jim, Jim puts.
I I think you should still be there just to re, notify both the board and the applicant that it is. You tend to lose things in the.
Okay.
And then Wayne's.
No.
Yeah. And so another condition, Bill.
Yeah.
You got, are you good? You keeping up?
Hmm.
Okay. Next condition will be that, um, Wayne approves the lighting fixture.
With the lighting fixture or the lighting.
So there's two parts of this.
He.
Right, Wayne approves the lighting fixture based on what Olaf can provide for the luminescence mapping. And, and, um, the town remainderd observed and does not require any additional, I don't know how to word the second part, but basically I want you guys to observe and then make sure that we don't want any additional lighting scheme in front of Bill.
All over.
Front. Yeah. Make sure that the fronting line scheme is sufficient. I think it's going to be, but I just want eyes on it.
We can use the language from the Main Street property that we.
Yeah.
Verify it and whatever. Okay, it's okay.
Yeah. And the final condition will be that the applicant provides the approved security plan.
Is the updated plan that shows, you know, those lighting that that are missed? That's, that would be in what the, the already, the condition about the light?
The existing condition. Yes, I think.
That we need a, that plan that shows all of the lights, that was what Natalie was saying, that we don't run it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we'll call this great, but.
No, 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 let's see.
Okay, I don't really want to know about the security.
Yeah. So we'll call that the
The site plan.
Site plan, thank you.
Yeah, so.
We can see that accurate.
For that condition about lighting.
Yeah.
The applicant needs to provide, um, a, uh, an updated, correct, um, we'll call it as built of, of current and proposed changes. Right? So the the lights, as Wayne said, we should have lights noted on, or if there's a light, it should be noted on the plan. I think on the north side, there's missing some lights. And then ca- clearly call out which light needs that you're planning to change and all changes you're planning to make. Wayne, did I get that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. I agree.
Thank you. Um, any other proposed conditions to this? Um, that's everything I had from our notes. Hold on, hold on, Bill's got two.
That the applicant maintain the time, your sign and working condition. We want. And that, uh, yeah, would not challenge the financial provisions of the host community agreement executed between the applicant and the site.
Okay, the applicant shall follow, uh, the financial dedication commitment to pay during the special, appearing special permits. I worded so I guess it, but.
No challenging the financial provisions of the host agreement.
Is the, for the maintain time and temperature sign, do you want that in perpetuity, or do you want that to be reviewed every time it comes up?
It can be reviewed.
Yes, it's not gonna last forever.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was like five years, but I don't know how long.
When it, when it comes back up for the.
Derivation of the.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, the boss. Oh, okay.
So, um, if you go back to the, um, to the coast community one again, um, Bill, can you just say, say the, the important part?
The application will not challenge any of the financial provisions of the host community agreement executed between the applicant and the site.
As.
Select more content change if all they want.
As referenced in the applicant, in the, um, applicant's, um, proposal.
Application for special.
Yeah, application for special, as referenced in the application for special.
You want to say they shall follow it, or they shall not challenge it?
I I think we're into, I think we're into. I think now it's.
All right, I'll go with that. With, uh, shall follow the financial provisions of the host community agreement cited in the application for special.
Julie, can you see if there's any public comment? Um, Olaf, um, you heard, I know that that might have been some of that might be confusing. What did you think about those conditions? Do you have any comments on that?
Uh, one comment regarding the lighting, uh, situation, because we don't know what the police chief will say. And it could be contradiction, and he wants this type of light and a very bright light and uh, Wayne says, no, we should have a different type of light than who wins. So that's why I made this up.
Yeah. I think in the past, I mean, we haven't had this precise thing, but presumably the police chief would say, I need, you know, light that illuminates this X amount of space at X amount of lumens, because I'm not, this is not my, sorry, right? And then it's a matter of, um, if these things have already looked at, aren't appropriate, then Wayne would.
Wayne would help find an option that's appropriate, that you don't need to come back to the board. So the condition is that Wayne approves the lighting fixture.
So if if the, if the police chief says you need whatever, right, um, as long as it's not on the front of the building, Wayne can okay, whatever, whatever will, will fulfill both needs, right? Both security and.
And now Wayne, now Wayne, twenty, Wayne's straight in the middle of this, Wayne, what do you think?
I I really don't think the board should have anything to do with security. We shouldn't be referencing that at all.
But we're, we're approving light fixtures in this application, so are you saying you should completely take out the light fixture as part of the application completely because that because we're not, we're, because we're, if we're not gonna, if we're not gonna have a, have anything to do with security lighting, then it not, should not be part of the, the application, right?
Yeah, I'm struggling with that. I don't disagree with you. Um, however, it has to be part of the application, right?
Yeah, that's why I'm putting you straight in the middle of this, Wayne.
I, I think it would make, I think it makes sense what you were saying of having you guys only, you know, it only comes back here if it's on the front of a building. Otherwise, it's up to you, Wayne, to deem it appropriate.
Right.
And Wayne's only picking the fixture. The police chief is picking the intensity.
The intensity, yeah. So he's not gonna, the police chief isn't gonna come to you, Olaf, and say, here's the light fixture. He doesn't really care.
An AC model twelve.
Yeah, like, and so that, that's where.
I don't actually want to speak for the police chief, because I don't know that's.
So we're being put. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, we're being put a little bit in a bind here, right? Because Olaf, maybe you can tell us, but like, we, we've been told the police chief approved your security plan, including lighting, but we know one of the lights doesn't work. Does the police chief know one of the lights doesn't work?
Well, I wouldn't say. It's still lights. It works, but it doesn't look right. Uh, it's hanging lit, so I think that needs to be reattached and everything works better. But I'm more concerned by the police chief that he may have some other criteria for lighting that his motion triggered, or something like that. And, uh, but I have a proposal, uh, how about we revisit it since we're coming back, I'm coming back in sixty days after we open? And if the lighting is not right, then we, we address it and we change the lighting.
Maybe that's a better option, Mr. Chairman.
You're buying on one. But so, so then there would be no condition? Wayne, regarding lighting, it would be a review at that point?
Well, if there was a problem.
It's getting late, guys.
Well, we, are we, we're putting in a review of the lighting on the front, right?
Yeah. No, so there's observations of the current lighting scheme.
So maybe, you know, I guess maybe Olaf's onto something here, right? The police chief has approved the security plan, including the lighting, right? Bill and I are gonna look at the lighting. Maybe the applicant should just come back in front of the board at a specific time that's comfortable with the board. And Bill and I will be able to tell at that point whether we noticed anything that was objectionable. The police chief will be able to comment whether there was anything objectionable. And if anything else has arisen, we're gonna know at that point. Otherwise, we just let it go.
So wait, has the police chief said, he's, he has said you don't need anything like motion sensors, or are you saying he might come back and say that later on?
There are some details in the security plan that, that mentions motion sensors and so.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so it's something we review later on. I agree.
Yeah, we need, we need a letter from him.
Yeah.
Stating our place.
Well, we send me one of the comments, that's in one of our.
Okay, so let's condition, that condition will be that, um, the, we, the town will review the lighting scheme within sixty days of, of operation.
But we are still keeping the, the front facade?
Yes, that's a separate thing.
Okay, that's, I think that's important.
Yep, yeah, because that's not lighting. That's just facade.
Yes, sure. In this, in this case, we can make it.
You, you get all that, Bill?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
That's why we record these. We, we go back and we listen.
Right, any other, any other thoughts, Olaf?
Uh, no.
Okay, were those agreeable to you?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Wayne, for your patience tonight. Um, you're welcome, you're welcome to sign off, Wayne, if you want.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, bud. Okay, so, um, if you bring up the staff report, please, Julie, and go to the actions required, which is section six.
Oh, one moment, I just need to share the screen.
Right, so, um, I'm going to make a motion to close the hearing, unless there's any other information you want to provide us.
Uh, no, there's, no, no.
So what we do is we close the hearing and then we go through the action items required and then, and then go discuss, make a motion, discuss. So that's why, just one last option, just making sure that it wasn't anything else.
I don't think so.
All right, I, um, any other thoughts from the board before we close the hearing? I have a motion to close this hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll start with that.
All in favor to close the hearing? It's five zero, Bill, to close the hearing. Okay, so the first item here is section ten point four. We have to make sure it's consistent with ten point four, and that's the special permit for zoning bylaws. Go back to the previous page, there's section three of the staff analysis, page three. Here is, here's the consideration. Julia, so some, if you scroll up. Some of the page, little higher. Little higher. Right there. Yeah, that, that's what we're working on right now. So I'll make a motion to find, I, I'll make a motion that this project meets the criteria under section ten point four of the zoning bylaws for the special permit.
I'll start with that.
Any discussion? I find some of these are met and some of them are not applicable. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, I don't find applicable for this applicant. Since there are no updates to the building and the building has, is a, this is allowed under the current use from an occupancy standpoint. Also, these are, remember, these don't say they have to necessarily be consistent, they say they have to be considered. So, yeah, I am not considering the public services and utilities for this applicant.
I think they're.
Thoughts?
I think it's, it meets all the criteria.
I'll make a motion to, also, the motion has already been made and approved, so it's a vote now. All in favor to approve the special permit under ten point four? That's five zero to approve the, the special permit for ten point four, Bill. Next, I'll make a motion that the application. You've been here all the time.
Now.
Oh. Um, I'll make a motion that the application, the applicant meets the criteria in section nine point four point six of the zoning bylaws for special permit approval within the downtown overlay district. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. So where? Page three again. Over here, making sure that it meets the spec. Yes, thank you, Julie.
Bye. Too many, too many devices. Scroll on here, forgetting that I'm not attached. Let me know if you want me to scroll back up. You're no longer a member.
Just leave it.
I'll leave it. Thank you.
I think it looks great. I think maintaining that time and temperature sign is worth a lot to me.
That's true experience.
I know.
I, yeah, the only, the only thing I, that I'll bring up is item three, it mentions significant improvements on a number of these items, and one, it needs to meet these, one of those criteria. Uh, I think the applicant has provided reasonable improvements. But I'm also considering past improvements for the business establishment to also meet the criteria of significant overall. I, if this was a new applicant coming in, I don't think the significant criteria is met, but I think the, um, the applicant has provided, not just for this application, but previous efforts and contributions to the town to be a significant improvement. That which includes the, um, the tree, like, treescape and the signage. So thank you for the passion.
Well, I mean, I'll give it to them for the, for the time, temperature sign, and pedestrian experience.
Listen.
I'll, I'll give it, I'll give it to them on allowing one or two employees to park out back, and I'll give it to them on allowing a budding business owners to approach on his space where they park. None of them are actually legitimately parking. They're all approaching on his space.
Which is a whole. Which is a whole issue that we will have to deal with.
But that is a huge
This application is not the town.
Huge benefit to the parking space allocation.
Yes.
So, I gave, I gave them.
The motion has been made, second, uh, any discussion, further discussion? Okay, all in favor to approve the special permit under nine point four point six? It's five zero, Bill, for approval for nine point four point six. Bill, you're gonna have to, Bill, um, Bill, you're gonna have to help me with language for the action item number three. The board shall consider whether or not the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh the benefits and impact of the town, what, what should the motion be?
With the, um,
that we do not find that
The adverse effect.
Yeah, the special, you know, I don't know why I put it in.
That's the beginning of ten four.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's kind of duplicate, but, uh,
F B D A actually required number three.
Page four, and section six. You keep going down.
Six, I am three.
Um, typically, typically, that would be more for a, a special permit connected to a a, a, a physical change.
So do we have to actually go?
Yeah, I would say, I would say, I don't think about number three, I don't think any of them three.
Be careful with the whole.
Yeah, I think I, I probably was thinking of them.
Jim, can you say that?
Can you say that again? Okay, um, if we don't need it, then we won't do it. All right, then I will make a motion to issue a special permits to allow marijuana retailer, uh, Wellspring, Mass Wellspring to be located at seventeen Nathan Street in Maynard. Do I have a second?
Would you hope so?
Oh, um, with the conditions as noted earlier.
Yeah, and who made the second?
I did.
So again, the motion is to, to approve, to issue a special permit for the main, for the marijuana retailer at seventeen Nathan Street, known as Mass Wellspring, with the conditions noted earlier. I'm seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor to issue the special permit? Five zero, Bill, to issue the special permit, thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Are we done now, or?
Well done.
Fine, of course, we didn't mention. We're not done, though. Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're done with you.
Oh, okay.
Um, I need a, I need a second break, so go ahead.
There's other stuff on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, I think they're tall.
Hang in there.
Oh, hey, more paperwork.
And the four ladies. Nine point four. The D O D district. I just printed out that. The zoning bylaws. New zoning bylaws.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
As of right now, we have nothing on next two weeks. So if we want, you know, the, you know, you want.
Right now, I'm trying to work with planning board, I mean planners, um, conservation mission, to get all of our meetings moved to Thursdays. So, and I, I know you're up, um, on the next meeting, but we might actually move that to uh, the Thursday of that week. So this meeting may tend, the next meeting to be Tuesday.
Sorry, I'm not following, you're saying that Conescon will be moved to Thursday?
Yeah.
Now, is that the idea?
And that, what are you doing at Conescon?
Oh, boy.
Defecting? No, I'm trying to preserve everything. That's what I'm trying to do.
Uh, so, yeah, and, and there's also, I mean, if you looked at the schedule tonight of how many boards are meeting, it's getting to a point where you know, uh, public meeting law is not, if you want to attend more than, than one, it's quite impossible.
Yes.
Everything is happening at the same time. So, um, we're voting this week, we, we spoke about it at our last meeting, but we're voting this week on, on officially moving to Thursdays. Then you guys get me more.
Yes.
We're gonna steal you for the, the Conescon.
Yeah.
Bill, uh, you, you, you're noting that we don't have anything on the agenda for next
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
To express, yeah, so before I discuss something, then maybe I'll go over, that's what, so we print it out.
Yeah, so we, so we could table this downtown overlay district discussion until then. Were you, was?
Yeah.
Are we gonna be talking about the boundaries as well?
I wanna talk about whatever you think is important, Bill.
Boundaries.
Yes.
The boundaries need to.
Yes. It's about the boundaries. I want, I have things that I think are, but, yes.
Emotional boundaries?
I can talk boundaries all day, but we'll stick with D O D boundaries for our, for the discussions.
And there, yeah, there's, we need to have a discussion about that and, and really start to, I've been starting to really look at all of the data that we do have and it's confusing and not matching and, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, let's table that discussion, here's a, just a few brief thoughts on that. Um, so for tonight, I was again reminded that it's, I think one thing we could work towards is having a, like a so here, here's how I feel like we approach applicants and have in the past, that we have an app, we have an app, can they come in? Then we see what's available for them to say meets the complete, complete streets policy or to contribute to like the treescape in the past or things of that nature. But I, I would rather we be more proactive and have a wish list already available for complete streets, for treescapes, for all these things. And then we can pull from those, because it's proactive instead of reactive. And so, I'd like to spend time over, you know, I'd like to spend some of our time figuring out how to find out our wish list and, and be proactive so that we can, we can even tell applicants as they're coming in the door. You know, here's, here's like the planning board's wish list, or the town administrator's wish list. So I think that's something we could work on, and I think it only quasi, it's sort of semi ties to the D O D discussion, but I, but I think they're connected.
Yeah, it would be important also to understand what initiatives are underway and how, but for this supplement, you know, we've got like, for example, the, 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 the we just, we're waiting any day to find out if we get a, a grant for the dumpster crawl in, in, you know, court.
So maybe we can provide you guys with a, a list, um, of what's, what is, is happening, what we're waiting on and what we, our goals are, um, and then.
Stuff like that is helpful, and, um, you know, like, if we had, if we had a vision for Naylor Court, we, we could have asked this applicant to help contribute to that Naylor Court vision. But we're, you know, that's, that conversation is still pending around town.
You're getting rid of the dumpster. Which one?
That's good.
Oh, good point, right, there you go.
But things like that, like, and so I feel like if we spend more time on the bigger picture stuff, we'll have things in our back pocket. And it'll be much easier to figure those out.
Absolutely.
And it will be also easier for us to, to guide the applicants, you know, and we have, if any, pre-hearing meetings with them. Uh, you know, th- this is what our hope is, and this is how we're trying to push you in this direction of providing this information, but we don't know what they're gonna say. If we had an idea, then we could provide them, um, to be well a little bit more prepared.
It provides clarity for them.
Yeah.
As well, so it's gonna be helpful for everyone.
I think it would be nice to maybe look to other communities in terms of complete streets, in terms of bicycles, right? To see what other than bike racks, other communities have done.
Wow, that is interesting, because we were, we were on today. Two things happened, um, about that, we were, um, speaking with M A P C and replying for a second grant on top of the D H C, uh, from the, um, M A P C grant, we're applying for a second grant, D H C D uh, to design the streetscape for the power. And that, and that came up, um, I will tell you this about bicycle, um, stuff in downtown. We still have a little bit of bike lash, if you heard that term? And, and there's still a little bit of that, so it's good to work on that, oh, yeah, um, it's just one of those topics that sometimes people don't view bikes with the same the same rights to the road that are, and, and resent the idea of bikes there, so for example, you know, you could have, um, bike lane would be this, I get a lot of blowback when we talk about bike lanes and stuff like this.
Nimble roads.
And, and so the point, the reason I'm bringing that up is if we're gonna, anything to do with that would be good with an educational program. Yep, I mean, we had a, we had a program called Bikes for Good Business, I don't know if I think it was right before you came on, but, um, that was talking about the economic value of bikes, you know, it was a pretty good program, but anyway.
If you're looking for a list of complete street type project, the state complete streets grant
Yeah.
thing. Part of that is a list of eligible projects, so if we just had that list, oh, yeah.
My, my biggest concern as a bicycle advocate and practicing planner, um, is, you know, complete streets is not complete, um, you know, it's, it's minimal. So, you know, when, when looking at I will just always kind of be, be in the background, um, as like someone who's, who's trying to, you know, I'll keep advocating and pushing us, trying to get us to, to the best that we can be, and the complete streets kind of brings us to the minimum, to the, to the floor. So, um, I'll, I'll leave it at that, but there's, there's a, a potential that we can have, um, and I've been working with Nishova Valley Green, Nishova Valley Greenways, which is a group of, um, there's, uh, ten towns, um, and we've all been looking at our bicycle infrastructure um, and trying to look at as a cohesive region, so we can start building connections, um, so that way it's not, you know.
Sorry, have you ever thought of the blue bikes that were, they, they would come?
Yep, so we actually applied for a grant, that's, that's a part of our grant, um, is, uh, uh, electric bike stations, so two electric bikes.
And the winter they take them out and then put them back.
Yes.
We had that earlier.
We had.
Yeah.
And how did that work on?
It went well.
Well, well, we were the highest.
Especially when we have things like that.
Yeah.
So, well, we're
We did.
Those, those are the types of projects that, you know, um, I can make a list of and, and let you guys know what's going on.
But, but if we're talking about the D O D project, I mean, we're not talking, so, you know, the one twenty nine Hartford type level, we're talking to somebody who's re- renovating a single building downtown, so frankly, I'll be happy if they just fix the sidewalk on their front.
A shelf.
Yeah, something, but, you know.
Yeah, well, it's a definitely a range of sizes, right?
That's complete streets. It's streets. So like, here, here's how it, in my ideal world, I would have, I would have a map of the downtown overlay district, or map of the downtown that shows shows an updated complete streets design, traffic flow pattern design, car complete streets design all around the downtown so that when we have an applicant come in, we can say, here's, here's our design of the updated downtown. Here's how you can contribute to that, and it could be sidewalk panels, it could be ramps. Because it shouldn't include ramps, it's not just bikes, complete streets is not just bikes.
No, but, but. But there's a number of, you know, the whole thing, so.
Cars, trucks. So I want like an integrated vision of what that all is, so that we can have that for this.
And I think the other benefit to that is, right, if you, if, if you're pre-application meeting or whatever, you show an applicant, look at all these projects that we have. Maybe there's nothing in front of their thing, but they're gonna feel more connected to something that's, you know, like right near them. It's a business, they're gonna feel like, oh, this is really, it's always good to get them.
We have a sidewalk replacement, um, program, right? I kind of would like a complete streets program for the downtown, that's kind of, that has that same feel.
Yeah.
Like, there's a priority list, it's a wish list.
Well, we do have a priority, we do have a priority plan, and apart, like today, a matter of fact, our meeting, our Julius arranged, Julie arranged a meeting this morning with, uh, Wayne and with, uh, E P W about, uh, improvements at the, what do we call them, Triangular.
Acting and Concord and He.
Yeah. Yeah, and, 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 um, so that's, we're gonna go, we're going full bore on that.
Great.
Not in downtown, but it's huge.
Yeah.
But.
Um, so those are my, that's, those are my thoughts on the, the downtown overlay district and how these things tie together, because I think they do well.
One of the things, one of the things that we're it's on our list for an open grant is, you know, the road diet from Main Street. Only the sidewalks out, you know, so we have a lot of. And if we had a concept plan, people like, and you're not losing parking, you're grabbing this, but you know what, people may have to go twenty miles an hour and a lot of people are upset about that, you know, the traffic's gonna slow up. But that's something that we, we embrace as part of the master plan, part of the overall vision for downtown. We have that, it, well, this is an educational part, but I think that would be so neat, because.
Yeah, but of course, that width is being used for deliveries right now. This morning, I went past three trucks delivering, that would not be possible to happen at the end of that.
Yeah, but we're gonna renovate Naylor Court, so it'll be fine, and all of these go back there.
So if, um, if we could add.
Something, you straighten out Nathan at May. Take low with it, I don't.
Oh, yeah.
And we could add a, as a complete street to next meeting.
This is, yes, this is the big con, because if these things all tie together, like complete streets ties to the D O D, ties to Naylor Court, ties to parking, ties to the sidewalk improvement plan, it all ties together, we just need to tie them up, put a vision on it, put a bowtie on it and then gain sort of traction and, you know, gain, gain momentum.
So I'll put it, um, as another bill, uh, we can do D O D, it's one, and then complete streets is another agenda item, and then however the conversation, they'll overlap, but at least we're being transparent to, um.
Yeah. Why, why would a delivery only be made on Nathan Street?
That is a conversation for next meeting.
Yes, I know, I'm just thinking of this.
Yes, no, anyway, but all those considerations have to be part of it, like.
Just kind of.
You can do a charrette.
What you don't wanna do is end up planning for hours, you do that a lot, you know, what you don't wanna do is this, we, you know, you just go and always expecting a.
Bill, I will not allow planning for hours.
No planning process.
No, can't happen.
This is a pretty big ask, yeah, to do that, that's a big project.
What, that's right, that's, it is, it's huge. The scope of it, the scale of it, it's a, it's a three year sort of endeavor.
You know, but that's that's why we have.
Right.
It's, it's a long endeavor and I'm bringing this up because I I'm thinking about next year's fiscal goals and I'm trying to see how, what we can do. Towards a larger sort of picture.
I love it.
Yes, Bill, it's big.
Okay.
Yeah. But I want us, we can, we can work, if we have, if we have a path, we can work on. Setting the foundation, we're not gonna solve all challenges now.
I mean, I will, but also.
Somebody chatting on her. She's just gonna allow us to. Thank you, Natalie, allows to catch up.
Linda said trash littering in downtown is a problem and finding a way to manage it would be immensely beneficial.
Oh, man, I mean, I have a lot of thoughts about that too, Linda, so I'm with you.
Yeah.
Let's talk about that next time. Complete streets have trash cans, right? I think they do.
I will get you a nice. Deliverable of complete streets definition.
And if we find it, and Maynard was one of the first to have a complete streets policy, is that correct?
He first.
He first.
We were the first to say.
So if if we find through our discussions that complete our complete streets policy could use some updates based on new information, that's always fine too. It's aggressive, I understand that. No, it's not a bad, I don't, I don't. I have a problem with this, I wanna make sure we keep the education, why we're doing it. I I'm sick in my career of arguing why a bike lane, where we need a bike lane, you know, and and your shoulder. We have to get it out there and and the walkability, come on, we're the most walkable town in Metro West. And we don't have enough walkable stuff even downtown, yeah, we could keep adding to it, adding to it, we don't have enough walkable events, we don't have enough. Our sidewalks should be, I think, wider, you know, the outdoor dining should be, but how people love that, you know what I mean? And it's. Educational. So that's the, we put this continuous for next time, any. Planner, dates usually go up towards Bill to this, but Julie, you're also, you also have, if you have any updates, Bill, any updates? You really don't? I have plenty, but everybody's higher.
He's gonna save it.
Including me.
He's gonna save it.
Yeah, I'm saying it's gonna be a long one, that's.
We'll give you a nice list next time, maybe a PowerPoint, who knows?
Any, any updates for us besides the Conescon changes?
There's movement on 115. That's my update.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, no, you can't. Got a rather close. More than you possibly, that's why he does it.
I'll make a motion to close the problem.
Thank you, I'll give you a second back. All in favor? All in favor to close?
Alright, Jim, sorry, it's all yours.
I'll make a procedure. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, always.
Night, everyone, thank you.